Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good morning, city staff, community members, and most important fellow council members. This is Burbank City Council's annual reorganization meeting of December 13th, 2021. Through the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 and in the interest of public health and safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be able to attend today's meeting. In lieu of in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in today's meeting. Our phone lines are now open for public comment, and members of the public may join the queue by calling in right now at 818-238-3335. We are very honored this morning to lead us in the invocation by the Archbishop, and I apologize, Mr. Bishop, if I butcher your name, but I'm trying my hardest not to do it, Archbishop Jovian Durdian, primate of the Western Diocese or the Armenian Church. Thank you for honoring us this morning.
Thank you, and I greet you all with a joyous heart as you start your reorganization meeting, and I will join you with a prayer from the bottom of my heart. Almighty God, you are the source of divine wisdom. Grant that we may always think, speak, and do that which is good in your sight, and deliver us from evil thoughts, words, and acts. You are the heavenly King. Grant us your kingdom, which you promised to your beloved, and strengthen our hearts to hate sin and to love you alone and do your goodwill. My dear council members, true leadership lies in our humble service. To be a leader in the life of the community certainly is a privilege graced upon our soul, yet it is a calling from God so that we may fulfill our duties and responsibilities in the civic life. The world is in a turmoil, and we ought to fulfill the mission of leadership entrusted to us diligently and hundredfold. The responsibility to keep our world in peace and prosperity need to be shared collectively. Today's council meeting must be historic in its nature, a meeting which obliges us to renew our love and commitment for the city of Burbank. People who live in this city, regardless of race, ethnicity, and political affiliation, must all fulfill one cherished vision, namely to make Burbank beautiful and safe for all. I pray to God to bless the city council and the leadership of the city of Burbank so that you may all share your gifts for this city with divine wisdom and the vision of excellence. The days ahead of us become luminous for you as the members of the city council become the source of inspiration through your outstanding excellence in leadership. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Archbishop. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for being supportive of the city council. Thank you.
My pleasure.
We will now have the flag salute. We're very honored this morning to have former two-term mayor, Mr. Michael Hastings. Please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Good morning, former mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of the city council, our exceptional staff, citizens of Burbank, and Bishop Durdarian. I'm honored and privileged to lead us on the flag salute this morning on this momentous day, so if you would all please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, former mayor Hastings. Thank you for joining us. Madam City Clerk, Ms. Mullins, for the last time, please call the roll.
I'm happy to do it. Councilmember Anthony.
Present. Thank you for being here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontis.
Present.
And for this round here, the last time, I think, it's Mayor Frutos.
Happy with the little teardrop to be here, but happy to be here.
Thank you.
Before we get to the public comment, I'd like to welcome our honorable Assembly member, Ms. Laura Friedman, to the meeting. Assemblymember Friedman, we understand you must leave early, but we really appreciate you taking the time to join us for our annual council reorganization. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Let's see if I can come on. Hi, everybody. Good morning. It's wonderful to see all of you. Thank you so much for letting me join you, and thanks for accommodating my schedule. I'm going from here to a press conference with our shared Congressman Adam Schiff so to talk about some infrastructure money that's coming your way. So, you know, that's all good news, and today is also a very happy occasion where we get to thank our outgoing mayor, Bob Frutos, for his incredible work being a steady hand during a very, very difficult year. You know, it's one thing to be mayor during a time of plenty when people are happy, but to do it during a time of stress for the community and difficulty for a lot of the people in your community says a lot about an individual. So, on behalf of the state legislature and the people of Burbank, I want to be one of many voices to thank you, and yes, we have an assembly certificate for you. I wish we could do more, but that's kind of what we do, as you know, but it really does come from the heart, and it means a lot to me. And for the incoming vice mayor, I mean, I know that vote hasn't been taken. Am I allowed to do that now?
No, not yet. We have to wait. We have to wait for that official vote. We have to wait.
Okay. Well, you know what? Maybe I'll try to stay on as long as I can, and maybe we can come back, and I can congratulate the incoming mayor. But so I don't know the proper way to do this. I guess I'll ask the city attorney if I can congratulate the vice mayor now, or if I should come back.
I think we have to wait. It's a set of protocol from the mayor. Since I'm the chair, we will wait until the council takes the official action per our charter.
Okay, I will be able to stand by then, and I look forward to coming back.
Oh, yes, you can stand by, but we just.
Whoever that individual will be.
Yes. Thank you very much, Assemblymember. Thank you. Okay, now is the time for oral communications. If anyone would like to address the city council, please call 818-238-3335. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council on any agenda item for today's special council reorganization meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have been informed that we don't have any callers, and the lines have been open since 9:55, and no callers.
Okay.
So, we're safe to go ahead and close the lines.
Okay, there being no public comment for the last time. I now declare public comment period closed. Okay. Since we didn't have any public comment period, I will go right into my remarks as my 12 months that really went by super speedy fast. I mean, it just felt like yesterday I got sworn in and as mayor, went through the ceremonial process, and now it's time to pass the baton on to the next individual to continue to lead our great city. So, probably this is probably one of the toughest things any outgoing mayor can really do because it's really soul-searching because you look at your values, your priorities, and what you wanted to accomplish, and then you have to summon up yourself. So, here I go, folks. It has been my true honor from the bottom of my heart to serve as your mayor for the last 12 months. As we all know, last year was definitely full of challenges. However, it was an opportunity to focus on providing the basic services for our residents and to work on the economic recovery of the businesses, and most important, the future of our city. To say it was challenging is really an understatement of the year. I stayed focused on making the right decisions for our city and to work with my colleagues on the council and the Burbank Chamber of Commerce to make progress. The most rewarding aspect of serving as mayor during the last year was to bring people together to reconnect as a community. After these last couple of years, staying at home due to the ongoing global pandemic was really hard for all of us, our residents, and we needed to show leadership. So, it has been rewarding to come and see businesses continue to recover and to see our community come together and continue to show resiliency. Together, we continue to move forward. In October 2021, the city of Burbank was recognized by the International Economic Development Council for our economic recovery plan. And last week's presentation by our Chief Financial Services Director reported that the Burbank's economy is recovering at a faster rate than initially projected. I want to thank our city staff for their commitment and dedication to Burbank. We now have a brand-new chief counselor that's going to be working with us to move our city forward. We're very lucky to have Mr. McDougall, our chief counselor. I also want to thank our executive team of many diverse backgrounds, religions, and different parts of education, skill sets, that they truly make up what we call in Burbank the platinum service. But I also want to thank from our city manager, Justin Hess, our assistant city manager, Judy Wilkie, for assembling an outstanding executive team, Mr. Hess. And you and the rest of the executive teams do make a difference. Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, together, the five of us have to come together as one body to support businesses, big and small, so they can continue to recover. These businesses are the lifeline of our city, the brick-and-mortar, the mom-and-pops, you know, the ugly mug coffee shop, Romancing the Bean, to some of our bigger restaurants. Two, we must, and I'm going to be adamant as a council member now, adequate funding for police and fire. We do not want to be like a neighboring city whose city council voted to defund the police and now has a serious crime problem. People cannot even go out and have dinner with their friends and family without the fear of having a gun pointed at them and robbed. We have people in other cities that are being followed home. We have to make sure that we don't become like that other city, and instead of defund the police, they are now revisiting to refund the police. Again, council members, we all have to come together to support and protect our residents' basic services. They've come to expect from the five of us to protect their services for platinum, gold standard. And we never, never must forget our precious seniors. They look to us to look after them, to make sure that the city is providing adequate services. And lastly, council, with the mandates coming from Sacramento, we have to fight hard to protect our neighborhoods, make sure our voices on behalf of our residents are working together with our electeds up in Sacramento by representing all residents equally and fairly. Councilmembers, I'm very honored and blessed that 12 months ago, you provided me this unique opportunity to be your mayor. I want to thank each and every one of you for that very unique opportunity. I would like to take this time to thank our elected officials, executive team, and key staff for all their hard work, and they've already been presented with the small token of appreciation, which they all got a really cool, this is from my wife for always helping me out at home, but they all received for the members of the audience and at home, a personal little pen thanking them for being so awesome to the people in the city of Burbank. And each one has her personal name inscribed. Okay, I want to talk about some of the elected executives of our city, starting off as my friend, Mrs. Zette Mullins, our top-notch city clerk. Zette, as the elected city clerk, you do wear several hats, from ensuring public participation and transparency in city decision-making process to managing municipal records and overseeing the city's passport program. Most importantly, you are elected by the people, and you ensure that the very precious democratic process is continued with integrity and transparency, including community-wide voter registration outreach, including your passion to get those high school students involved in their civic, you know, engagement. You are awesome. You rock. We are grateful to have you and your staff that works for you as a team. You guys do exceptional work for Burbank. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, ma'am. That's a nice gift to write a check for Christmas for me. Oh, thank you. Okay, a Christmas card. The next elected official is Ms. Crystal Palmer, City Treasurer. I had the privilege of, back when we had Civic Pride, I appointed as one of the majority of the council to bring Ms. Crystal Palmer in as Civic Pride Community Member, and then I had several opportunities before she became a city clerk to talk about issues within Burbank, so I was very proud to support her. So, Crystal, as our elected city treasurer, you have constantly proven your talent in managing our city's investments. Despite the economic impact of COVID-19, you have managed our $450 million portfolio with a steady hand safeguarding our investments, maximizing returns, and ensuring that we have adequate cash on a day-to-day basis to fund our city's services. By integrating key principles in our city's investment policy, you have led our city in seeking investments that affirm our commitment to sustainable, healthy, and safe and fair practices. The council and the city are grateful for everything you do, and again, we're so happy that your family is growing, and the little ones are healthy, and it's their Christmas time. Our third is our Chief of Police, Chief Mike Albany's. This year, chief, you took on a very challenging role as our new Chief of Police. During your short time in office, you have reiterated the department's community engagement endeavors, achieved professional accreditation, and overseen several complex criminal investigations throughout the circumstances related to the pandemic. You have ensured and continued uninterrupted provisions of police service to our city. Thank you for your efforts to ensure public safety of Burbank. We look forward as a council to continue your vision and leadership as our top law enforcement officer, not our top chief counselor, but our top law enforcement officer. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Division. Jennifer, as a financial services director, you oversaw the city's budget process as well as our annual audit and financial report. Over the past year, you have helped manage the city through the financial impacts of COVID-19 pandemic and helped the city secure $25 million from the American Rescue Plan. Burbank's financial future is bright, and we look forward to more positive reports from your team regarding the city's economic recovery. One of our newest directors now, Mr. Ken Berkman, Public Works, who also has a groovy blue Corvette. Ken, as Public Works Director, you oversee a department that is critical in our everyday lives, from streets and sidewalks to sewers and storm drains, solid waste collections and street sweeping, and all the infrastructure that keeps us moving efficiently and safely each day. Your leadership has been impactful. You have helped set up a revamped capital improvement program and help with the Sustainable Burbank Commission create a focused work plan with specific goals for the city to achieve. Your energy and passion is greatly appreciated, Ken. Our Fire Chief Garcia. Chief Garcia, as a fire chief, you oversee the city's fire prevention and fire suppression efforts, as well as the provisions of emergency medical services and our emergency management team. Under your leadership, the fire department hosted several vaccine clinics with more than 2,500 essential workers receiving their COVID-19 shots, including members of our school district. Your team is on the front line of our community's emergencies, and we do appreciate you and your fire department for all that you do, sir. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreations Director. Marissa, I think you have probably one of the grooviest jobs, that if I was a city executive, I want your job. As our Parks and Recreations Director, we thank you for your dedication and enthusiasm in serving the residents of Burbank. You lead a large and diverse operation that positively impacts the lives of all community members. Despite the challenges of this past year, you and your team provided countless recreation and sports offerings, childcare programs, special events, completed public art installations, ensured we have well-maintained facilities, and exceeded the city's goals of planting 500 trees in Burbank. Marissa, thank you for all that you do for the city and the people of Burbank. Ms. Elizabeth Goldman, our Library Service Director. Elizabeth, as a Library Service Director, you lead three libraries that are essential to the fabric of our community. This year, you continue to grow your online resource to help students succeed and individuals and families of all ages improve their prospects. The city's first social worker is part of your staff, helping connect people in need of resources, and the libraries are now home to Burbank Employment Connection. Thank you to your talented team and dedication to our community, and thank you also for working with our sister city committee, and most important, thank you for the historical perspective where residents can download their photos, and we treasure these photos for future generations to know how their city has grown, you know, 50 years ago. Thank you for that. Kevin Gray, our Chief Information Officer. Go Raiders, Kevin. As the city's Chief Information Officer, you now serve an additional role as the online city council meeting producer and director. This year, you played an instrumental role in the city's website redesign, the mobile 311 app launch, and the implementation of our online vaccination tracking software. You have made IT a trusted partner in all key aspects of city operations, and your innovation continues to help us better serve our community. And, Mr. Gray, I always want to thank you because I'm a little bit behind the technology curb, but between you and your staff, you've helped me come on board, and every time I talk about how you're bringing the next wave, you know, of more efficient operation through IT, you're always willing to listen how we can make sure to connect with our senior citizens and working with the Jocelyn Center. Thank you. Ms. Dawn Roth-Lundell, our Burbank Water and Power General Manager. What can I say about you, ma'am? You as a Burbank Water and Power General Manager for just over one year, your work has totally been impressive. With your leadership, BWP has received multiple awards from the American Public Power Association. Way to go, Dawn. You paved the way of future development, developing of transportation electricification efforts, and played a pivotal role in BWP's water assess management efforts. You have a vision of creating a sustainable energy future with both local and utility-scale contracts for, the most important thing, carbon-free resources. Your dedication, Dawn, your energy, your positive attitude help provide sustainable, reliable, and affordable water and electric services to our city. Thank you, Dawn. Ms. Betsy Clinton, Management Services Director. Betsy, I've had the privilege of knowing you back when I served, I think in 2004, that the, I think it was a 16 or 17-member Charter Review Committee, and you were just an intern helping us out. I'm so proud to watch you grow and develop as an outstanding Management Services Director. Betsy, as Management Services Director, you oversee employment services, labor relations, and workers' compensation programs. You have led the charge in successfully negotiating for and implementing councils' labor savings initiatives to save millions in pension and workers' compensation costs. The pandemic forced you and your team to navigate complicated policies in response to ever-changing guidance from outside agencies. Your hard work has contributed to the safety of employees, the financial stability of the city, and good relations with the city's labor groups. Thank you, Betsy, for all that you do, and I know you bring lots of excitement to this type of position because I always appreciate listening to you and your forward thought process. Patrick Scott, Community Development Director. I would never want your job, Patrick, because that's a hot seat across the city, but Patrick, your professionalism, your dedication as our Director of the Community Development Department, you know how to manage a team that handles planning, building, housing, economic development, and homelessness. You brought on some very, very talented people to your team that you've assembled. Thank you for your hard work, Patrick, in helping the city navigate recent housing legislation and for supporting our businesses and residents through the city's economic recovery plan, the Community Development Block grant programs for businesses and tenants, and the streamlined online permit and plan process. Under your leadership, your team has demonstrated their extraordinary ability to be nimble and pivot from one priority to another, and most important, work with the council sometimes when we're just kind of busting those chops and trying to really get to some tough answers, but we do appreciate you and your staff for always being professional with us. We appreciate your commitment to building beautiful and thriving neighborhoods. Thank you, sir. Judy Wilkie. Judy, as an assistant city manager, you provided support to the city manager's office and city council office. Your strong work ethic and vast knowledge of city services are an incredible asset to us. You are quick to respond to our requests as well as those from the public, always with accuracy, poise, and tact. It is evident in all that you do, you have been Burbank's best interests at heart, and you truly love this city. Judy, you are always willing to help, guide, and give information advice to your colleagues on the executive team. This past year, you continue to effectively manage the pandemic's impact on our city, keeping our residents and business community informed on the ever-changing county protocols. Again, Judy, thank you for your unwavering dedication to the city of Burbank, and Judy, thanks for always recruiting your husband to be my DJ at some of my community events. He makes it a fun evening. Simone McFarlane, McFarlane, our Public Information Officer. Simone McFarlin, McFarlin, our Public Information Officer. What can I say? You were there. We did some great public presentations to get the message out on behalf of the city. Simone, you and your staff are dear in my heart. You wear two hats on this team. You are the Assistant Community Development Director of Housing and Economic Development, and you oversee the Public Information Office. You collaborate with all city departments to educate, inform, and communicate the Burbank happenings, what's going on, and programs within our residents. This year, with your guidance, your team launched a new website, premiered the new style show, Hey Burbank!, and it created a 30-minute homeless PSA, provided ongoing updates related to the pandemic, and produced a state-of-the-city event. Thank you to Simone and her PIO staff. What can I say? The next guy is our, is our top counselor, Mr. Joe McDougall. 16 years, but you made it to the top position. I was proud to be part of the council's negotiation team with the Vice Mayor. Joe, you've demonstrated your commitment to the city with over 16 years of service. We on the council are especially excited to have you as our newly appointed Chief Counselor, City Attorney. We are confident that you and your team will continue to guide us in a way that best benefits the Burbank community. We look forward to having you as our new, it says "top lawyer" originally, but no, you're the top counselor. The other top lawyer retired, it's a top counselor. What can I say about Justin Hess? When you become the mayor, you spend a lot of time with our city manager. All I can say, Justin, thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for our long hours, our complicated conversations, to do what's the best for the city. You recently completed another year as our city manager, one that was both challenging and encouraging. Did you ever think, Mr. Hess, when you were working out of Dome Kukos, when it was one of our office buildings as an intern, that 20-plus years later, you'd have the top position? It's quite an honor of your tenacity, quite an honor of your dedication, and, most important, you need to be acknowledged, because you're behind-the-scenes kind of guy. You're very quiet. You let the council and the mayor do the leading, but you know every aspect of every department and what's going on and who's who in the zoo. We are very lucky to have you, sir. From vaccine rollouts to pandemic restrictions being lifted to financial recovery and economic growth, you have helped us weather this year's storm with your strength and leadership. Justin, you continue to build a strong executive team by looking at the caliber of folks that you have hired, including our new Financial Services Director, appointing an outstanding intern police chief, to tapping into our existing labor pool for strong and capable leaders. You have kept our employees informed and helped them know how much they've appreciated. You made sure our residents, businesses, and visitors continue to enjoy excellent city services in a safe and vibrant community. And, most important, this 12 months, you took on the election of two brand-new council members and having to spend a lot of time with them and keeping those conversations professional, respectful, and thank you, because then it's tough. It's not easy. It's tough. Thank you for all that you do, and, most important, for your commitment to excellence, sir. Viviana Garzon, our Administrative Analysis. Viviana, you are the newest team member to the City Manager's Team. You jumped into the Administrative Analysis role seamlessly. Oh, Viviana, I wouldn't want your job. That's a tough job. You've got five different council members you've got to work with. Ejo, that's tough. You are the staff liaison to all city departments, and you definitely have displayed strong teamwork every day in my short time interacting with you. You work behind the scenes, leading up to every council meeting, coordinating the multi-step agenda process on Tuesdays. You are diligent during public comment period, ensuring callers have the opportunity to speak. We appreciate your hard work, Viviana, and looking forward to another great year working with you. Sandy George, our Executive Assistant, working in our office. Sandy, what can I say about you? You are the jack-of-all-trades. You've got five different personalities pulling at you, five different calendars, requests. I don't know how you do it, Sandy, but we're very blessed to have you as the Executive Assistant to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council Members. And I know your hands are full, and I know that even on the weekends, I can get a hold of you. And attention to duty, Mr. City Manager, on the weekends. She is top dog. She's there. You help create the city proclamations and certificates and help the public reach the council. You maintain our busy calendars, keep us on schedule, and help us serve our city and residents successfully. Sandy, thank you so much for being the top dog in that office and keeping us focused and on track. Chad Thompson, newest member, clerical worker in the office. I don't like clerical worker. I shouldn't have put that in there. But you're a part of the team. You're an asset, and, Chad, we appreciate you for your work in the council manager's office. You help with the distribution of important council documents, answer countless phone calls, and provide us with daily support. You're always willing and upbeat to lend a hand and assist in technical questions. And Chad, I can always appreciate when I'm in my office and I smell that you ordered a pizza, I know you always share at least two slices of pizza. Thank you for keeping the mayor fed during the last 12 months. I appreciate your upbeat personality and positive demeanor, Chad. At this time, I would like to thank all the city staff who have worked so tirelessly this year to enable the city to adapt its key programs, services, and meetings as we continue to deal with the pandemic. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed. The council and the Burbank community, thank you for your hard work. A special little shout-out to Mr. Adam Walker from Public Works, who's the guy that sets up the Christmas tree, puts up the lights when we honor, you know, whether it's blue lights for police, red for firefighters, women's cancer awareness. You're the underdog, sir. You never get acknowledged, but we on the council do appreciate your hard work. And I also want to mention our custodial staff that, man, this city hall, with the volume of people that come in day in and day out, when I sometimes leave the city council meeting at Old Ark 30, the floors are always so shiny. They're always so respectful, and they wait till the last minute. Thank you, custodial staff. Council members, I have gifted each of you a picture of the five of us, so you can treasure, frame it, think about what a great 12 months we had. I also want to recognize each of you and provide you with a gift that you have in front of you. I would like to thank my colleagues for your trust and support during these last 12 months. Vice Mayor Telemontis, we go back when I served for you as a police commissioner for eight years. I appreciate you. Oh, hang on. Standby. I got out of my notes that I wrote. Vice Mayor Telemontis, Council Member Springer, Anthony and Schultz, it really was an honor working with you and getting to know you a little bit better off the campaign trail. We accomplished many great things together. How about the installation of electrical vehicle charging stations and the opening of the Burbank Boulevard Bridge, maintaining a balanced city budget, appointing a new city attorney. I call him Chief Counselor. But, most important, this wonderful city continues to be a wonderful place to work, live, and play despite the ongoing pandemic. Thank you, all council members. Vice Mayor Telemontis, now I'm back on track. I had the pleasure of serving for you when I was on the police commission and the charter review. Our team benefits from your working knowledge. You are a very well-rounded and experienced council member, and you have attained respect from a lot of state legislators up in Sacramento. I have seen you in action when you're walking the hallways, door-knocking, setting up meetings. You came to the rescue when we were short, was it 75 million for the Burbank Bridge? You and Council Member Springer stepped up. But your many years of experience as a council member and a representative in our city in numerous regional commissions, thank you for what you do for the people of Burbank, Vice Mayor. Council Member Springer, you've grown into your position. I'm very proud to see how you have developed as a well-rounded, outstanding representative of the people. I appreciate your love for this community, your gardening, your passion for the senior citizens, and, most important, I've seen you in action at the last meeting with your passion for local control. You're like a pit bull, Sharon. You don't let go. You fight hard for what you believe in your heart. You show empathy in your decisions, always pointing out who we are as a council that we represent the people of Burbank. Council Member Anthony, you're just completing your very first year. Welcome aboard. You bring a unique perspective to the team, very unique. We appreciate your energy and excitement for this community. Thank you. Council Member Schultz, another legal scholar, not the chief legal scholar of Burbank. Ooh, I like that one better, chief legal scholar. You offer our council team a valuable legal perspective on matters, and you ensure we remember to dot our i's and cross our t's. That's that lawyer in you. You're definitely a great addition to the city council team. I am grateful for this past year and looking forward to continuing to work along each, alongside of you, each and every one of you. We have great things coming our way and the responsibility to continue making the city of Burbank an even more amazing city. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite my council members to acknowledge their families and friends. Vice Mayor Telemontis.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. As far as my family, I'd like to thank my entire family for their encouragement and support. This is a very exciting day, as you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Not everyone from my family was able to make it this morning, but the ones that did are my daughter Krista is in the house with two of my, with two of my grandkids, Dylan and Reagan. Reagan is our newest addition to our family. I believe she's five or six weeks old. But anyway, she's the newest addition to our family. So we're very happy and proud of that. My son-in-law David, newly-appointed head football coach at Chaminade High School, and my other grandson Shane did not make it. My two sons, Eric and Scott, along with family friend Gina Kosai, are here. My daughter-in-law Tracy and two granddaughters, Lana and Lila, did not make it today. Unfortunately, school gets in the way and other issues, but they wish everybody would be here. And last but not, certainly not least, the backbone of our family, the heart and soul of our family, my wife, for over 45 years. I want to thank her from the bottom of my heart for all her encouragement, support, criticism. Why did you say that? How come you did that? Between, between my wife and Scott, I get a lot of critical things that I can build better on, right? So anyway, Sandy, thank you very much for all your support. I love you, and we'll see what this coming year has in store for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Springer.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank my family that is scattered all across the country, from Alaska to Montana, Mississippi, to Texas. And I also want to take the time to thank my neighbors and friends and community. I have an amazing neighborhood with amazing neighbors, and this community is just so important, and I'm so grateful for it, for your support and your kind words. So I thank Burton, Jim, Suzie, Kathleen, Mary Ann, Gary, Sanan, Linda, and I apologize if I've forgotten anybody, but I love you all, and I appreciate all you do for me. Thank you very much.
Council Member Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My son could not be here today. He has his homeschooling, but I do want to thank Margot Router, my fiancee, who helped me, not just during the campaign, but through all of the, all of the issues that we deal with every day in this city and all the advocacy that I do on and off this council. She's right there by my side. I would also like to thank my personal mentor and guide through the city of Burbank, Janet Deal, who literally knows, I think, everybody who lives in the city and every department and nonprofit and organization. She has been a wealth of resources to me personally and has helped me this last year immeasurably. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Member Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all of my friends, who are simply too many to count, but who have been of assistance over the last year, who have listened to me talking about the issues that the council is considering and have been my moral compass at times, my guide. But, you know, in addition to my daughter, who probably can't appreciate it yet, but absolutely is willing to be without daddy from, from time to time, so I can be here and do the people's work. I have to give a very special thank you to my very best friend, and that's my wife, Ally. And for those of you at home, you know, there's, it's a lot of, I mean, we all know here, it's a lot of work being an elected or appointed official, but we can't do it without our spouses. And Ally has just been, you know, she's always been that person who's willing to talk me through every issue, or as the vice mayor says, you know, criticize when she thinks I got it wrong. But I would like the public to know that Ally is really the force behind my activity on council. She is the person that I trust implicitly and talk about every issue with, and she goes without me for a lot of hours. So before I'm done, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to invite Ally on screen, and I wanted to present her with some flowers and just say how much I love you, sweetheart. Thank you for sharing me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Classy guy you are, Council Member Classy Guy.
Mr. Mayor, it's that day again. Comes around every year. As, as an outgoing mayor, you never look forward to this day because you've had such a challenging year. And you get used to the rhythm of dealing with the city attorney, dealing with the city manager, with the public. But it's this time that I would like to present Mayor Fruitos with his gavel. His gavel being right here. This is in gratitude for your, your service as mayor and for working with city council, staff, and the community. Thank you for your commitment and for working with us as a team. Congratulations on a year as mayor. I invite my fellow council members to say a few comments about Mayor Fruitos at this
I'll start. I'll let Mayor Fruitos get situated here. Great, thank you. Bob, thank you for your service. Thank you for your steadfast leadership during a difficult year, a challenging year. I know that it was not easy, but I sincerely appreciate your service as a colleague and as a resident to keep us steady, heading forward in a steady way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
If I could follow that up. Mr. Mayor, this year has been unprecedented. I know Council Member Springer was mayor when the pandemic started, and it took us all by surprise. When you took office a year ago in this seat, we were already in the throes of this economic devastation. We were, we were in trouble. The whole country was. We found a way out. The reports coming back from our economic recovery are hopeful, very hopeful. So thank you for leading us through that mess, for finding the light at the end of the tunnel. It has, it, it will never be another mayorship like you've had this year, an entire mayorship under the pandemic. That's, that's once, once in a history. So thank you for all the work that you did and weathering the storm with us.
Thank you, Constantine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, I'd like to go next. And I take great pride in saying that perhaps one last time, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I came to council, you were one of the very first people to sit down and talk with me, Mr. Mayor, and talk about how to be a successful council member. And I know that we've been on the opposite sides of some issues, but I'd like the public to know that you've been nothing but, not just a great leader for the community, but a great mentor and a friend, really, in guiding me and to find, coming into my own and trying to...
own and trying to be the best advocate for the community that I can be. I promise I'll keep it short, but I did, I just want the community to know, because sometimes we gloss over these things, how successful of a year it was in spite of the things that Councilmember Anthony just referred to. We started the year with setting five goals, but the first three of which were economic recovery, housing and homelessness, and sustainability. And working together and under your leadership, Mr. Mayor, I think we can be very proud of what we did together. We created an economic recovery task force that the vice mayor and councilmember Springer worked on to bring every corner of our community together, to make sure that everybody is building back better and that we're, we're not just getting back to where we were, but we're improving where we started even before the pandemic. We had a 90-day local eat-at-your-own local restaurant campaign, Chow Down, that I believe is your brainchild, Mr. Mayor, and was, I think, very successful and was a lifeline to our businesses. We passed urgency temporary ordinances to cap the fees that were imposed on our local restaurants and we provided much-needed relief to our frontline grocery and pharmacy workers. We had robust small business loan and rental assistance programs under your leadership, Mr. Mayor. We added over 800 units of housing, including 80 units reserved for very low-income individuals and families, and that is more than the last several decades of Burbank's history. We established a homeless services coordinator. We opened the safe storage site to assist with the storage of personal items and connect unhoused individuals to supportive services. We created a sustainability coordinator to spearhead BWP's sustainability programs and initiatives in the year ahead. And last but not least, we've launched a new website and we are on the cusp of launching an app that every resident in Burbank can download to their smartphone and be able to engage with our government in a way that they never have before. There's a lot more that I could say, Mr. Mayor, and I won't for the sake of time, but I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your leadership and I truly hope that you are proud of your accomplishments over the past year. It wasn't easy, but your mentorship, your guidance and your leadership of the community, I think that the work we have done is a testament to all of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Nick. Before we proceed, our city manager, Mr. Hess, has a few comments. Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get situated here. Traditionally, the city manager presents the outgoing mayor with a book of memories. This photo album, which I have here, it's quite heavy. Hopefully, everybody could see it. This photo book captures your term over the past year. However, before we show some of your photos, I'd like to recap a bit of your term. Mayor Frutos, your second term as mayor began with a focus on the city's fiscal stability and economic recovery as we embarked upon almost a full year in the COVID pandemic. You also remain steadfast in your desire for the city to work hard at maintaining the exceptional quality of life our residents enjoy. And although one year later, we are still holding council meetings virtually and the pandemic lingers on, most of our businesses are open and we are seeing positive signs of economic recovery for our city and community. City services are back in full swing and we are able to encourage community spirit through celebrating Burbank's 110th birthday with special activities and challenge coins, along with holiday decorating contests and our annual holiday tree lighting ceremony with exciting guests and entertainment. As always, your sense of humor kept our virtual meetings lighthearted and your passion and enthusiasm for Burbank, mixed with a little bit of fun, was well received in your mayor shows and state of the city. The community got a glimpse of beautiful cars and a roller coaster with your visit to West Coast Customs, a behind-the-scenes tour of Volt Lights, a lighting entertainment company that was homegrown by two of Burbank's younger generation, a scary makeover just in time for Halloween at Mud in the downtown, and an adventure at Nickelodeon Studios trying to find out if SpongeBob SquarePants is from Burbank at the same time getting slimed while at it. During your mayor term, you vigorously supported our city's economic recovery and through your support of the partnership between the city and the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, the Chow Down Campaign was created to help our local restaurants. You hosted meet-the-mayor dinners at many of these. To help our city's economic situation, we were fortunate enough to receive 25 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding. Several great projects were unveiled, including the new Burbank Channel Bike Way, 26 new electronic, electric vehicle charging ports in the downtown, and the long-awaited reopening of the Burbank Bridge. Your leadership shined bright as the lead on the newly-created city's Equity and Diversity Subcommittee, and your continual eye on the city's fiscal condition through your role on the Audit Committee and Fiscal and Treasurers Review Group was appreciated. You joined many meetings of the, as a liaison on the Board of Library Trustees, Infrastructure Oversight Board, Police Commission, and Sustainable Burbank Commission, as well as, as well as sharing your activities, their activities with your colleagues. The town behind the tinsel was unveiled at your State of the City address to more than 500 people on October 20th at the Airport Marriott. The video hosted by Clay Mason, Mayor Frutos, was full of fun, facts, and inspiration reminding us all that our city, the media capital of the world, is a special place that many people want to invest their time, talent, and money. You were in Sacramento to accept the prestigious Helen Putnam Award for, from Cal Cities on behalf of the city for our older adult program, where through our project, HOPE, we were recognized as a model city in promoting independence, health, and dignity for our older adults. Mayor Frutos, despite our continued challenges from the pandemic, which forced all of us to continue making sacrifices, your second term as mayor brought progress, economic recovery, community healing, and well-deserved recognition to our world-class city. Burbank is headed for more exciting things to come. We hope this album capturing your term as mayor is an excellent reminder of all that was accomplished, as well as the foundation that was created during your mayor term to keep Burbank headed in the right direction. So without further ado, staff has created a video, a short video, that includes these photos, along with the short montage, to recognize your ability to have fun while still getting things done. So with that, if I could have staff play the video.
I bet you don't know where I'm at today. I'm at West Coast Customs. I have a wardrobe malfunction, so please give me one minute to fix this.
All rise, the Honorable Judge Bob Frutos calling court to order. All rise.
Okay, let's see what happens. Hey, 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 hey. One, two, three. I hate my Wheaties. It was a scissor malfunction. You have to Photoshop this. Okay, Ross. Ready, count it again. One, two, looking out here, three. Here's what's really special about sitting down with you, and not just an interview, but a conversation. I'm always excited to introduce to the community people like yourself. Well, I want to thank you and your staff for this unique opportunity to let the community know that, you know, Bob's a real guy. Robert, please call me Bob. This is an informal interview. I feel connected to you. I gotta ask you, please, please answer my question. What do you do here in Burbank? I'm a regular guy that's just trying to do what's right for the people of Burbank. Can you let the, the members of the community know what schools you went to and if there was like a couple teachers that were really impactful? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm lost for words, emotional right now, so please forgive me, but thank you. Mr. Hess, do we have any other state or federal officials on the line or? Nope. Okay, then. Arda's not here from Senator Portantino's office? Oh.
I am here. Good morning, Mayor Frutos and members of the city council. I am happy to be joining you on behalf of Senator Portantino as we celebrate the leadership of our mayor and look ahead to the future. Mayor Frutos, thank you for your hard work and unwavering dedication to the city of Burbank and its residents. On behalf of the senator, I'd like to present you with this certificate of senate recognition. This recognition is a direct reflection of your conscientious service to our community. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you so much, Arda. Thank you, ma'am. I'll catch you at the next ribbon cutting.
Last but not least, Los Angeles County Supervisor Catherine Barker sent a video for today's occasion. Please play the video.
I'm honored to join the city council this evening to thank Bob Frutos for the impact he's had as mayor. Bob, you've been a valued leader who has demonstrated great passion and dedication to this community. Though you've served as mayor before, I know the pandemic posed many new challenges. Thank you for your commitment to our residents in the face of hardship and your resilience on the path to recovery. I've been especially grateful for your advocacy on behalf of small businesses and the entertainment industry, which are the backbone of the local economy. Thank you also for ensuring a great quality of life for residents, especially through your leadership on transportation and public safety initiatives. On behalf of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, I've sent a scroll of commendation as a gesture of my appreciation. I am very proud of the close partnership between the city and the county. I look forward to working with Jess Talamontes as you assume the role of mayor again. I'm eager to collaborate with the entire council as we continue to navigate recovery efforts from the pandemic and prioritize the needs of this community. If my office can help in any way, please don't hesitate to reach out. Have a very happy holiday season and I look forward to seeing you all in the new year.
Thank you, Supervisor Barker. The city of Burbank values these types of relationship we hold with our elected representatives at the federal, state, and county level, and we want to thank all of you for all your advocacy on our behalf for the people of Burbank. We are honored that you were able to make time to join us this morning. Now is the important time. Now is the time prescribed by the city charter for the reorganization of the city council. Motions for the selection of mayor and vice mayor are needed. Is there a motion to select the mayor? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Frutos. I nominate Jess Talamontes.
I second the motion. Is there any comments, discussion? I would like to add that Jess Talamontes is an asset to the city. He comes with a lot of experience in, in, in governing and leading as mayor, and we're very fortunate to have him. So I'm very proud to, to support vice mayor to mayor. Madam City Clerk, any other councilman wish to weigh in? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with everything you said and I would just add that, you know, Councilmember Springer and now you have had to govern in really unprecedented times, and I know that Vice Mayor Talamontes has the experience and the vision to continue guiding us, so I, I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A year ago, I, I made the motion to nominate Jess for the position of vice mayor to, to follow his tradition of strong leadership and educated leadership and experience. This is exactly who we need, getting us out of this pandemic right now. Bob, you have set the stage for a brilliant recovery and I believe Jess is the one to carry us through, so thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
And gonna call on Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Yes, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Just wanted to hear you say that. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor Jess Talamontes. My seat is a little bit hot. I think you better take over. Come on down.
Mr. Mayor, this is honor, pride. Take care of our good city, sir. It's an honor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I have big shoes to fill, especially with your leadership this past year, so thank you very much. Good morning, Burbank. Thank you for joining us as once again your five council members gather for a city charter to select your mayor and vice mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for their vote of confidence to represent you and all of our residents and businesses as Burbank's mayor. The last two years have been a time of unprecedented crisis. I'd like to thank my colleagues, especially former mayor Sharon Springer and Bob Frutos for their leadership. The pandemic brought many changes and issues never faced in the modern era. However, things are improving and will continue to do so as the number of community members receiving vaccinations and booster shots increases. As a council, we have an obligation and a responsibility to do better, and I am confident that by working together and with input from you, our community members, I know we can. I know greater understanding I know greater understanding and solutions will come from all of us. Let's work hard on these issues together and continue to enhance our safe, beautiful, and thriving community. We will continue to make Burbank a safer community and make our outstanding police, fire, and other city departments even better. I anticipate yet another impactful year working with our business community, Chamber of Commerce, local nonprofit groups, our boards and commissions, and the dedicated members of our city labor groups. As we prepare to embrace 2022 and anticipate what challenges and opportunities it has in store for us, I feel confident that we have the can-do attitude to overcome any challenges that come our way. Our region is facing reduced local control by Sacramento. Housing has become even more expensive caused by the underproduction of affordable housing. Low-wage workers are facing unemployment or lack the willingness to return to the workforce. And remote work is becoming an essential part of the new normal. At the same time, there is an abundance of opportunity. Unprecedented resources are being made available from our federal, state, and county partners to support housing and economic growth. We must use this to identify new policies, programs, and legislation that has the potential to bolster our road to economic recovery. As you can see, we are going to have our hands full this coming year. Collaboration and cooperation will keep us moving forward. Thank you again to my colleagues. I'm excited to see what we can... we'll continue to accomplish together. I would like to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you. Okay, now we're getting back to the agenda here. I would like to begin my term as mayor by entertaining a motion to select a vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Former Mayor Frutos?
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilmember Sharon Springer for the position of vice mayor. And the reason why I want to nominate her and get the full support of the council is by fostering a culture of equity and respect, we will show our strong community support for women by nominating Ms. Springer to vice mayor. To be fair to Councilmember Springer, during her year as mayor, Councilmember Springer was strictly limited from performing her ceremonial role as mayor. Our city, as well as our country, was locked down, and therefore, she was unable to attend any in-person events such as presentations, ribbon cuttings, and meetings in our community and elsewhere. Women in our community need to be represented in our city. We need a diverse city hall. And I know we've talked about equality and respect for women. She is our only council member that represents women, and I like to set the example. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Well, can I make a... please make a comment?
Well, there's a motion on the table, but there is no second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? Comment? Yes, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor Frutos... excuse me, outgoing Mayor Frutos, for your confidence in me. And I do believe that the Burbank community needs the voice of a woman in city hall. And I am experienced. I've been tested, and I would appreciate the role, again, as vice mayor. And I am moving the city forward and will continue to do so. I'm up on all the housing, all the local control issues. And everybody is in the city is important and must be included in all of our conversations going forward. Thank you so much, outgoing Mayor Frutos, for your confidence in me.
Yes, Mr. Frutos?
Again, this should be a 5-0 vote just because we talk about equity. We talk about the Women's Commission. Just this past Saturday, I was watching on YouTube.
Well, let's stay on the nomination, Mr. Frutos. Let's not get off course here a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You made the motion. Is there a second? Any other comments? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you very much, Mayor Talamontes. Sorry, I'm going to have to get used to that. You know, I completely agree with everything that... this is really weird. Councilmember Frutos mentioned. I think that Councilmember Springer is incredibly well-qualified, and it is important to have women leading in our community. We desperately do need more women on the city council. I'll go on record to say that. With all of that said, I know I am the newest member and the youngest, but I am a fan of custom and tradition. And I know in studying not only Burbank's, you know, history and tradition, as well as that of other communities... and I don't speak from a position of self-interest. The next in line, by my calculation, would be the councilmember senior to me, Councilmember Anthony, who received more votes in the course of the election. So on the basis of that custom and tradition, I would, if appropriate, make a substitute motion to nominate Councilmember Anthony.
So this is a substitute motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Anthony?
I'll second that motion, just to have a discussion. I do appreciate everything that Councilmember Frutos has said, and I agree that Councilmember Springer is well-qualified for the position. In looking at the current makeup of our city, it's rare for an individual to serve as mayor twice in the same term. It's rare for somebody to be appointed vice mayor who is up for reelection. The continuity of our customs, the traditions of our, you know, democratic norms, I think, must be held. Even though we're in this unprecedented times, every little piece of precedence that we can hold to, I think would be important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For discussion, one, it's up to the individual council at that time because we've had Councilmember Dr. Gordon that it took him seven years to finally make mayor. We had Councilmember Susan Spanos, who never made mayor. So there is no tradition. There is no policy. It's what the council feels. And I feel that this is where the rubber meets the road. We talk about equity. We talk about fairness. We talk about empowering women to be represented as equal. This is the time where the rubber meets the road, and we should really support Sharon Springer and not look at a tradition that there's no policy written. There is nothing written that says we cannot do what we're doing. It's happened in the past, and it will continue in the future. It's really, are you willing to stand up with what you say about equal for everybody, including women? She's the only woman on our council, and the women in our community are looking at us, the all-male dominant council, to make sure that we really mean what we say. Treat women fairly and equitable.
Let's...
That's what this nomination really stands for.
Councilmember Frutos? I appreciate what you're saying, but I think we're getting a little bit out of... We have a substitute motion, and there's a second for that. So there's no... Yes, Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Talamontes. And again, I just want to say I really do appreciate Councilmember Frutos' comments. I agree with everything that you're saying. And I believe that Councilmember Springer would be... would make an excellent vice mayor and future mayor. I think that she has qualifications that are bar none. However, the reason that I have made the substitute motion, and I say this not so much to change the minds of any of my colleagues, but because the viewers at home, I think, have a right to know why we vote the way that we do. My position is that, with all due respect, Councilmember Frutos, I have seen the tradition, and I do know that some folks have been skipped from time to time. But I think that the rotational nature of our mayor and vice mayor position is really important because at a time when it feels like there is hyper-partisanship everywhere, the rotational nature makes sure that we're not overly injecting partisanship in politics and jockeying into this position. I think that the rotation makes sense for me. It's certainly a tradition that I'm comfortable with. So that's why I made the motion. That's why I'll be supporting that motion. But I do want to be very clear that if Councilmember Springer becomes our next vice mayor, I will, of course, support her. I'll be very happy with her leadership. And again, her qualifications are bar none.
You know, let me weigh in. I've been pretty... fairly patient listening to everybody. And Councilmember Frutos, I agree with you. I agree with all your comments, definitely. I agree with Councilmember Springer's comments. But it's not like she's leaving the council. She's still part of the council, part of five mayors, part of five members, I mean. She's had the opportunity to be mayor. She's had the opportunity, vice mayor. It's unfortunate sometimes life... we don't know what's going to be dealing in front. For example, this coming year, we don't know what's ahead of us. But I do feel that there has been a tradition, even though it hasn't been written anywhere. Councilmember Frutos, you're right. But I've been around long enough to know that I feel that I have to stay to the tradition of having the newer members that have been elected to be part of the leadership process. We're all leaders up here. We're five councilmembers that are representing the entire community. And like I've said many times before, I don't represent a district, a neighborhood, or an area, or a segment of females or males. I represent everybody in the city of Burbank. And I'm old enough to know that not everybody's going to agree with me when I make a decision, when I take a vote. But that's part of being an elected official, you know? So I have to stick to the theory and the mindset that we've had for over the hundred years here in Burbank to be traditional in who your leadership is. Is there any other comments now that we've got a substitute motion? Madam City Clerk?
Taking the vote for substitute motion, and that would be Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
And Councilmember Frutos?
No.
Councilmember Springer?
No.
And Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Vice Mayor Anthony. Please join me in congratulating our new vice mayor. You know, and this is very odd for me being... this is my first action item that I'm dealing with. And like Vice Mayor Frutos has said for all his year as this term of mayor, I like to have a 5-0 vote. So apparently, we weren't able to have a 5-0 vote tonight. So we start on that platform, unfortunately. Any comments, Councilmember Anthony? Or Councilmembers in the end? Go ahead.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I'll actually echo some sentiment that I heard during my first year from our then-mayor, Bob Frutos. We take the vote. We see where the chips fall. We move forward from there. I'm not going to rehash what just happened over the course of the next year. I think it's important that, once the votes are taken, we all move forward. Personally, I don't believe that every vote should be a 5-0 vote. I think there should be some discussion. There should be some debate. There needs to be both sides of an argument, and we have to find a compromise, and we move forward. On days like today, on Reorganization Day, I like to wear this specific tie, if you guys can see it. It has red and blue crosshatches there with a white stripe. Today is a day for both sides coming together, the reds and the blues finding that white light in the middle. We need to reach out across the aisle. We need to build compromise moving forward. There's only way out of this pandemic is if all of us join hands and take a step forward. That's the only way we're going to get out. As the vice mayor, I'm happy to support our new mayor. When I first started attending city council meetings in 2016, Jess, you were the mayor. So you were my first mayor. I know you weren't the city's first mayor, but for me, you were my first mayor. So I'm happy to be your right hand. I will do everything I can in my power to continue my outreach to stakeholders and organizations who need to get involved and get invested in the community. You know, we say all politics is local. There are so many people who don't get involved in local politics. They see what's happening in DC, and then they turn off their screens and shut off their phones. I try to urge everybody, get your neighbors, get your community, talking to your city council, talking to your school board, talking to your local representatives. We need to hear from you. You know, it's not just the five of us. It's everybody working together. So I will continue that outreach as vice mayor. We know, moving forward, that our small businesses are still under the same tax burdens and regulations that big businesses have thrived in the pandemic under. We need to change the way we treat our small businesses in this community. Hopefully, as vice mayor, I will get a larger voice in advocating for those small businesses in helping us find some path forward where we can find legal ways to stimulate our small business economy, the restaurants, the local mom-and-pop shops. All of those is so important to me. And lastly, we're all talking about it. It's not a discussion that is new to anybody, but our streets and our roadways must, must become safer. I'm not going to mention what happened over the weekend, but we know that Burbank has this blind spot. We talk about it being a safe community. We talk about being a place where you can raise kids, and that's absolutely all true. But there is a huge percentage point when we talk about where sidewalks meet the roadway and how we interact with cars, bikes, pedestrians. It's a discussion that is going to take us the next year, possibly more, to deal with. And so hopefully, as your new vice mayor, we can take that action moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the councilmembers. I appreciate everything you're doing today.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Will my colleagues weigh in? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Burbank is my home, and I support my city that I love very much, and I've been here for 30 years. So I will continue to do my best for every resident in the city of Burbank. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. I had a technical problem. I got booted out of the meeting. I just want to just, again, convey my congratulations to our new mayor and vice mayor. Speaking specifically to our vice mayor, I know that we don't always see eye to eye on everything. There are points of disagreement. But the beautiful part about democracy is that we all have a voice. I look forward to continuing to see Councilmember Springer be a voice and a leader in our community. And I trust that with our mayor and our vice mayor, we're in excellent shape in the year ahead, and I'll support you both in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Frutos? You're muted. You're muted. Unmute... There you go. Go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say congratulations to the vice mayor. And this is our democratic process, and I'm ready to move forward and see what type of leadership you bring to the city in moving us forward. I'm on board. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I want to welcome my new vice mayor. Congratulations, and looking forward to working with you and looking forward to working with all five councilmembers like we have been. It's not a matter of working with one or another. No, it takes five councilmembers to make policy decisions moving forward. And we all have different perspectives. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't. But that's what makes us better as a council. Councilmember Springer, I'm looking forward to this year to working with you, especially where you feel that there are shortcomings from council. Looking forward to address some of those items. And to the community, I'm here for all of you. I have an open-door policy. I've always had that my whole time on council. Don't hesitate to call me if you have a problem or a concern with me, or a decision that I made. Email me, call me, we can meet. So I'm available. Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to the mayor and the new vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, let's see here. I guess we're coming to the... We're coming to the last page. Okay. So the City Council appreciates your presence at the 2021 Reorganization Meeting, a very special meeting for all of us. As you know, the council meets in regular session Tuesday nights at 6:00 PM, and the public is always welcome to tune in and join us. I just want to congratulate outgoing Mayor Frutos once more... one more time. You did a great job. I loved working with him as his vice mayor. We got together and made a lot of good decisions along the road. So looking forward to working with you as well this coming year. Councilmember Frutos. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned to Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, for a regular meeting via teleconference. Thank you, and have a nice day.